All right. Good evening. Welcome to the December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Manchester County Council. Begin with the pleasure of the ladies.
Flag, United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, and it is both liberty and justice for all.
Those are our microphones? Is it that one? All right. Well, we're working on some technical issues here. We're going to move forward. First order of business approval of the November eighth, two thousand twenty-two minutes. Should have a copy. Any questions, additions, or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes since submitted?
I'll make a motion. We approve the November eighth, twenty twenty-two minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Carries unanimously. Moving on, October twenty-two treasures report. Copy of the treasures report. We have a motion to receive the October two thousand twenty-two treasures report.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 And motion opposed? No? Okay, moving on. November twenty-two, she had the check register. Motion to receive the check register.
I'll make a motion that we receive the November twenty twenty-two check register.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, motion carries. Mayor's report. We're going to get something here a little bit later as we move on, but just to give some current updates. Snow in town, please remember that all town streets are snow emergency routes. When the snow emergency plan is in effect, parking is prohibited. So we do know that people kind of take advantage of being able to park on the street sometimes, but when we got to get the trucks out and clear the streets, those cars have to be moved. Please also work in your area to keep the hydrants free of snow. Of course, we hope we don't have emergencies, but that'd be something we don't want to slow things up if we do have one. Town office here will be closed December twenty-third, December twenty-sixth, and January second for upcoming holidays. Frozen pipes, reminder that Department of Public Works, disconnect your garden hose before it gets any colder, otherwise you run the risk of your pipes bursting and freezing as the temperatures continue to drop here. Manchester Volunteer Fire Department, train garden display down the second floor of the firehouse. Times are listed on the website, which is ManchesterBFD.org. Do you know how long that stays open, Steve?
I believe right before Christmas, if I'm not mistaken.
Another week or so.
I think December twenty-third.
I think so.
Yeah. It's very nice, very nice training display.
The Curly Magical Christmas Lights. Lights come on at 5:00 PM and end at eleven, open all week through December. Donations go back to the Volunteer Fire Department here. That's something that's on the news like every year at this point. It's become like our own little version of Thirty Fourth Street.
Correct.
Christmas tree pickup on Wednesday, January eleventh and January eighteen. Please remove all decorations, including the tree stand, and have those kind of facing away so that we can efficiently get those up. Water bills will be mailed out and are due January thirtieth. Again, it's one of those weird months, not January thirty-first, they're due January thirtieth. As we're moving towards the end of the year and then rounding the turn towards the end of the school year again, it's hard to believe that we have a scholarship opportunity here in town. The Charlotte B. Collette Memorial Scholarship applications are now available at Manchester Valley High School with a due date of May first. Any questions on those announcements? Again, I have a few more things to bring up later in the evening. With that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Bill Early from Clifton Larson Allen, who is the partner performed on of our town financials.
All right. Thank you, Ryan, Mayor, Council. Once again, I'm pleased to come here tonight to offer you a good report. Once again, we have an unmodified report on your financial statements for this year. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Kelly and her staff for helping us out, pulling in the documents, giving us workspace, and answering all of our questions for the, it seems like, several weeks now that we come on site. Thank you, Kelly, for letting us come on site. Several of our clients are still remote, but it's nice to actually come in person and work here. If I did say we do have, if we have a concern, one of the concerns we would say is that, I don't know how many retirement parties Steve Miller's allowed to have, but every time I come here, I'm told he won't be here next time, and he's here. So I was told in June, you won't see me at the meeting when you come to report, and I look across, and there you are, Steve. So, but no. So we do have an unmodified opinion again this year. The opinion does read differently if you did get a copy of the financial statements, and when you do have a moment to look at it. Does it say anything different? No. It's in a different format. It's a little more wordy. That is only because auditing standards changed, so the tempo we use from the accounting, AICPA, it's got, they pretty much give us the wording, and every accountant uses that. It did change. It's a little more detailed as to what our responsibility is and what management's responsibility is. Kelly is responsible for your day-to-day and your budget actual financials. That's how you manage it. You get the check registers, so you're more concerned with budget actual. So you do solicit our help to actually prepare the financial statements. So again, we do have that as one of our findings, that we help prepare the financial statements, but they are reviewed by Kelly, and you do have financial on the mayor and the council that look at things, as well as segregation of duties was noted again this year, and I sat here and observed you all receiving the check register, so I know you're doing your compensating controls from that standpoint. We did not have any real changes this year, except for the implementation of GAZB eighty-seven, which required you to put some leases on the books. Everybody had to do that this year if you had them, so that did go on the books this year. No real issues with that. We do have our typical estimates that we have every year with pension requirements. No identified unusual significant transactions. No difficulties were encountered during this year's audit. We didn't have any uncorrected statements. We did make some journal entries, as we typically do, mostly to convert from cash to accrual basis of accounting. There were no disagreements with management. As I noted in note one is where you'll see that a change in accounting principle, that you adopted the right to use assets. You actually have lease, you're actually at lease or two for things such as the cell antennas and everything, so you actually had both. You had the lease source side, which is not a lot of governments had that when we had to put that in. We did get a representation letter from management that said everything they told us was truthful and accurate to the best of their ability. Again, this year, they told us there was no other consultants they consulted with regarding accounting principles, basically opinion shopping during the year, and we had no issues that we discussed prior to being retained as the auditor, so there's no independence was not impaired there. Besides that, I'll answer any questions you have, but again, a clean report, as Steve would say, Kelly stays out of jail once again.
Another year.
Another year, shelter freedom.
Around prison.
But again, another, for the size of the town, you should be again proud of that you have your, the financial staff that you do. I will say, when we do our audit, when we have questions or issues, and they do come up, like compensated abscises came out this year, and recording of accounts or fixed assets, Kelly's always more concerned with, did I do something wrong, and how do we fix it than, you know, she even, it doesn't even rise to our material limit, but Kelly always wants to make sure it's done right and it's accurate. So that's something more people, a lot of people are more concerned with getting it just done and completed and out of the way, where she does express concerns of making sure it's accurate and right and going through, and we see that with all the staff that we work with when we're here. So with that, I'll answer any questions you all may have.
Appreciate working together again, and thank you for your hard work.
All right. And again, if you do have any questions, once you have time to read the report, we're always available, phone call, Teams call, in person, whatever it would be. If you all need anything, we're here. So, okay? Thank you.
All right. That turned over to Steve Miller for the town administrator report.
Very good. Good evening, Mayor and Council members of the community. You have in front of you the November twenty twenty-two administrative report. Under the federal relief funding, status report to Carroll County is due by January the fifteenth. I know Kelly's working on that. The MEMA storm reimbursement, which I've had on my report for the last few months, we were notified by, from Carroll County that there were not enough eligible expenses in the county for the July twelfth storm to qualify for any reimbursement. So we weren't able to recover any of those lost funds. The ENR upgrade, I supplied everyone with a letter from MDE in regards to approval of the PER, the preliminary engineering report. I've also included the breakdown of the cost of the work to be completed. As you can see on the PER, the total estimate is eighteen million, five hundred sixty-four thousand, two hundred forty-two dollars. MDE's share of that is sixty-five point three two percent, and the town's share would be thirty-four point six eight percent, which comes to six million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, sixty-five dollars. Now, I want to warn everybody that these are just estimates from the preliminary engineering report, and the cost will likely increase during the design phase without a doubt, and they will probably increase during construction phase. So I just want you to be aware of that. But as you can see, that letter accepts our engineering report for the preliminary engineering report for the ENR upgrade. The Bachman Road Tree Planning Project, I supplied DNR with a letter of support for this project. Under code enforcement and zoning, you have in front of you the monthly code enforcement update. The Lippi Old Town Property, I supplied you with review comments from MDOT and SJA in regards to the traffic study, and the acting district engineer from MDOT does agree with us that alternative one, which is the intersection of Maple Grove Road and Route thirty, seems to be the most sensible one for the homes coming out of the Old Town Lippi property. And that's one thing that we requested be done. So they do, they do accept that. MDOT does. Raleigh's Garden, as reported last month, the infrastructure is complete, and the owner has requested a reduction in their letter of credit. Under miscellaneous items, the deed of easement for the Grafton Street water main loop has been signed by all parties. Materials and equipment, actually, it started arriving on Monday. We have the pipe on site. We have a job trailer on site and some other, I think there's a backhoe there. And also, staff is in the process of updating our five-year capital improvement plan in preparation for the upcoming budget process. There's two items that I want to bring to your attention. First of all, I want to thank the mayor and the council, the administration staff, the police department, and the maintenance department for my retirement party. Everybody pitched in. It was a fantastic day, a very special day. I'd like to thank the police department and the administration staff for my gift. They know I'm a woodworker, and they gave me a watch, which is made out of wood, actually, and it's very nice. So I really appreciate that, and I really appreciate the gift from the mayor and the council also. That was very nice. I appreciate, that was a nice day. That was a special day. And from our entire staff, I want to wish the mayor and council and our community a very Merry Christmas and a very safe and Happy New Year. Any questions for me?
Steve, just one quick question with the ENR upgrade. At the percentages, understanding that the cost will likely increase as we move into the process, is that sixty-five point three two percent going to stay set?
It'll fluctuate, probably.
I mean, I understand, like, as we went through the process, there's some expenses that are ours entirely. The state will pick up some of the portions entirely.
Correct. You will see, a good example would possibly be some components that may have to be added, that the state looks and says, no, that's not part of the ENR project. You're going to have to pick up, you know, you're going to pick up the cost for that.
Okay.
Valves that have to be replaced, electrical issues, maybe that go to existing equipment that's not going to change the process of the plant. So, yeah, that will, that will definitely fluctuate.
Anything else for the town administrator? All right. Chief Hess is not with us tonight. I believe he sent out, if you have a copy, I'll give some highlights here from the police report. Oh. I'm sorry, I'm getting off.
That's okay.
No, you'll go ahead. Oh, no, Mr. Rodney Cooney's Director of Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Please see the water and wastewater data report for November, and an update from last month on this. We did have our flow meters checked out, and they checked out to be accurate, and that was at the wastewater treatment plant in the spray field. However, our folks found some algae buildup on the partial flume, and the partial flume is a part of the metering at the treatment plant. So we feel that is what was skewing the numbers for the last couple of months, and as you can see, it's not as vast of a difference between water pumped and sewer treated this time. Moving on, our trucks and snow equipment is, we, everything's serviced and ready to go for this winter, and hopefully we won't need it for this Thursday. Next, our facilities, our new hire, our facility specialist and I got together, and we invented and fabricated an undercarriage car wash, washer for our trucks and equipment, and this will be kept at our car wash, our car wash bay, and our hope is this will help with salt damage and corrosion. Yes, very, it works really good. We tested it out.
Good.
The, moving on to water, our Manchester Waterline Replacement Project, Steve already touched on this. We have materials moved in. They're starting to mobilize. The planning project start is mid-January twenty twenty-three. Wastewater Treatment Plant ENR upgrade, Steve also touched on this. To add, the, our, our design engineer is still working on the design cost and scope, and this is expected January first, twenty twenty-three for our review and MDE's review and approval. The inflow and infiltration investigation repairs, nothing new to report on this. Our stormwater management inlet and piping repairs for this fiscal year is at ninety percent complete, and the contractor is Stainballs Incorporated. Update on the dump truck sale, the two thousand three, we plan to advertise on the public, public surplus auction website with a reserve price of thirty-eight thousand dollars. Let's see, the town of Hampstead and Carroll County used this service with great results. The street and town facility paving projects is at a hundred percent complete. And lastly, the Charlotte Quest Nature Center driveway repairs, we decided to take a different approach, setting two inlets and piping it down to an, a rip route to slow the water down. And so I reached out to two companies for proposals, and they came in over budget, so I'm suggesting encumbering the funds and bringing this up at the next budget, through the next budget process. And that's all I have.
Sorry, Skip.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you.
Anything, anything else for?
No action items.
Did see that.
When are we anticipating the dump truck going on, the website?
Actually, I had an appointment today at two thirty, which is tomorrow.
Okay, okay. So within the next couple of weeks?
It could be live by tomorrow.
Okay. And then another question, Rodney, from DPW. I've had at least a half a dozen residents ask me about our tree on the water tower. The, the tree that was engineered four, five years ago on the water tower is a local favorite, and I've had about a half a dozen families ask, what happened to it, where it is, is it out of commission? Like, I know I had purchased a ton of lights, because we at one point had talked about putting them on the other ones and then figured out that we couldn't. So we had a bunch of lights that were here if, like, something went wrong with it.
So it's hazardous business climbing up there. It's about a hundred and eighty feet to climb, and it takes three people, and we're running out of folks that are comfortable doing that. It's, it's a risky thing, so we decided not to do it.
I thought it was set up on a design, almost like a patio umbrella kind of thing, where you just install it and, and like slide it up.
It's an eighteen-foot pole. It takes three people to put it up. It looks like setting the pole at Iwo Jima, way up on, on the tower. It's really risky, so we decided it was a safe, for safety reasons, we decided not to go that route.
Is there a way that it can be reengineered for next year? I just know it's, it's a huge thing. I don't want to put our guys at risk by any means. I know that in the past, we've had a, a safety plan in place for them that they haven't, you know, harnessed in, however, to be in compliance with OSHA and things. It's just had a lot of people have been asking about it, and it's, it's missed.
I know. Can I answer by saying we'll look into it for next year?
Sure. Yep. I mean, obviously, Christmas is a week and a half away. I'm not expecting it to be up for this year, but if we could look into it for next year to get it back up somehow.
I was one of the volunteers, and I'm fifty-five years old. I'm not getting any younger, so it, it's, it's a long, tough climb, and it's, it's windy up there, and it's, the pole's eighteen foot, feet tall. It is risky, but we'll look into it for next year.
Okay. And then one last thing. We had talked about the truck. Last month, you had brought in a truck proposal. I thought you were going to look into it.
I did. I, I reached out, I did branch out to nine different dealers, and the, none of them could beat the price that I brought to you guys last month. Steve had me look at some used stuff as an option. I went out to Westminster, and the one out there was a twenty seventeen, and it had fifty-one thousand miles on, and they were asking fifty-five thousand dollars, so that was out of budget. No one has any twenty-twos available. I guess, again, I'm recommending we'll just encumber that fund, those funds for this coming budget process.
Okay, did we look at, at one point, I thought there was discussion about a, a truck that we had that didn't have a plow mount or something on it?
That was Steve's truck. I mean, we can look into that, but I talked to our, our folks, and they don't, see, we have a lot of cul-de-sacs, and that truck's longer, and it's hard to see with a longer truck, and it's, it's a crew cab. It's harder to see with a longer truck with having a crew cab, so, I mean, we can talk about it, but.
I mean, it's something to explore. I know fire, fire trucks can make the cul-de-sac turns and things, and, and it happens, and I understand that some of the neighborhoods are tighter than others. I get that, but I think it's an option that we need to look at seriously and explore, because at one point, the discussion was that that was kind of like a backup truck, so it wasn't necessarily out all the time. So maybe, you know, if we had to use it, we could look at a, maybe strategic placement of that.
Okay. Good point.
Thank you.
Anything else for the Director of Public Works? All right, now, take two on the police report. Chief Hess, not able to be with us tonight due to, not able with us tonight. I do have a police report. I'll give some highlights here of the month of October. Handle two hundred and forty calls for service and/or requests for service via emails or phone calls. Twenty-five of the calls for service were outside the town limits, this is either the sheriff's office or Hampstead. We investigated zero Part One crimes, which is a, a good thing again. The, the team's been busy with many calls, but nothing really significant. They did issue three hundred and thirty citations and warnings, six subsequent traffic-related arrests and criminal charges, so those numbers were back up for November. Overdose summary for the county, not all final numbers were in, but the final numbers we had as of a point in time, year-to-date as of October, two hundred and seventy-nine versus three hundred and forty-two for the county, the same period in twenty twenty-one. So those numbers continue to move in a positive direction. Year-to-date fatalities is forty-one this year versus fifty-three at the same point in two thousand twenty-one, so again, good news there. Bi municipality, and these are overdoses, not fatalities, obviously. Westminster had ninety, Tawney Town thirteen, Hampstead seven, Manchester seven, but zero for September, October, and November. So we've got some good things going on here. Sykesville one, Mount Mary three, New Windsor one, Union Bridge zero. So that's what I have as far as the police report. Of course, you can't answer a whole lot of questions, but, all right. This is not on here, and I'm shooting whether or not to, to go through this during the mayor's report or wait a little, wait a little longer. So I think we'll do this before questions and comments in the community. As everybody knows, Steve Miller is retiring. He's been trying to retire for a while. Thanks, we had a good joke from the auditor about it. Had Steve's retirement party on, on December fourth, and he's been gracious enough to stay with us as we've been working through both some several, some larger projects here in town and, and a search for the next town administrator for, you know, hopefully the next decade or so. So obviously, we all know what Steve meant to the town. I've had individual conversations with town staff and each of the town council members, including Councilman Cunia, who is, who's out of town today. So at this point, I'd, I'd like to introduce and nominate, and the way this is for everybody, as a part of the discussion, the way that the process works for our charter position. So it's town administrator, police chief, director of finance, really, is if we have a vacancy at one of those positions, the mayor nominates somebody, and they are then confirmed by a three-fifths vote or more from the council. So with that, Alex, I'd like to introduce Mr. Alex Periconi, if you don't mind coming up, and I'm not going to read your whole resume, but maybe if you want to give us some highlights, and then these folks may want to, may want to ask some questions. They haven't had as many conversations with you as I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name's Alex Periconi. I'm pretty much a lifelong resident of Manchester. Grew up on Old Ford Schoolhouse Road, really, been around the town my whole life, except for the first ten years of my marriage. My wife and I lived in Hampstead. We moved back to family property. I've served with the Volunteer Fire Department, coached Manchester baseball for a while when my two sons went through. I've just, I've been around. I currently serve as Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I finished thirty-two years with the City of Baltimore in the Fire Department, retiring as the Deputy Chief. Was in charge of two commands during that time. The last final year, I acted as the number two in the department as Assistant Chief for a while before I decided it was time to, to pack it in and, and stay home, and it's been a good thing. Currently, I'm employed with the State Fire School. I run the six regional offices. I was really happy to be able to apply for the position. I'm really excited to give back to the town that really helped me. And I grew up here. I, all the places I look around always have good memories. So I look forward to hopefully being able to serve the citizens of the town and give them the best that they can have, because I know it's a great town to grow up in. I certainly want to offer that to everyone else. Those are pretty much the highlights. Be glad to ask any, answer any questions that you have or comments.
Did, um, thank you for that, Alex. Did everybody get a chance to read through Alex's resume? Is it, he's, I think you're being a bit humble with some of the, some of the things on there. So I, I'm going to give a few more highlights here, just, just for the record. Education-wise, Alex graduated Maryland Fire and Rescue Institute, National Fire Academy, the Bachelor of Science from University of Maryland, University of Baltimore as a master, a Masters of Public Administration. You mentioned you were on the Planning and Zoning Committee. I think you were on the Planning and Zoning Committee when I was, and I haven't been there for twelve years.
You sat, I sat to your right.
Right. So Alex has been the Chair, I believe, since two thousand nine or so.
That's close.
Yeah. I mean, I may be off there a little bit, but Alex has been, I, I know that, I don't know if anybody here has been on Planning and Zoning, but it's a really strong group. It's done a lot of really good work in looking out for the town's best interest as developments come in and developments move forward, and so, you know, from that standpoint, you know, it, it would be Planning and Zoning's loss, but as town administrator, you'd still be in the room, so, you know, you would still be there. So, yeah, I, I think some of the stuff, you're being a little bit humble. It's a, it's a very strong resume and a very, you know, you've done a lot for, for the town. You know, my, my recommendation is that, yeah, if you guys want to ask, you know, any questions, but I, I think Alex would make a great next town administrator, although some pretty big shoes to fill.
I just would like to say I have my wife Kathy with me, so without her, we wouldn't have such a great life together and wonderful town, and so she's enjoyed living here as well, and.
So, kind of like, you know, like throwing it out there, and this has been a, a long process. We are getting to the holiday season. I know that there's, there's two trains of thought here, and it's that, do, do we let this nomination settle a little bit and allow you guys to have a conversation versus, hey, you know, Steve's been very gracious with his time, you know, these, these past couple of months, yeah, past several months. And, and I hope you continue to not, not be a stranger, because we do have, I mean, it's a wealth of knowledge that, you know.
We have a vacancy on Planning and Zoning.
We have a vacancy on Planning and Zoning, yeah.
Throwing that out there.
You, you know, but the, the other, you know, the thought process is, you know, at least in my mind, I don't know that we can reach a, a better decision by delaying it a month, but that decision is really up to you guys. I mean, my, my piece of it is, you know, I think this is the right way to move forward, and maybe it's time to cast that die. I mean, my, my piece of it is, you know, I think this is the right way to move forward, and maybe it's time to cast that die, and we'll see what we can do.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I've spent time reviewing Alex, and number one, I, I think it's a very impressive resume, and I think we'd be thrilled to, to have you a part of this family, you know, this, this is a family here. I, I think it's a good fit, I think you've come very highly recommended, and it would be my recommendation to accept the nomination tonight. That I think it would, I, I think it doesn't serve us any point to, to delay this anymore, so, so I'd certainly be
I agree.
open to make that nomination, so.
And I will, I will go ahead and second that, if that's what we need. Did you?
Yes.
You made the motion?
Yep.
We have a second, motion and a second, any, any more discussion, or? All those in favor say aye.
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 Close?
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
Alex, I
Happy men in this.
So we'll have, Alex, I, I have an oath of office, we can, we can do that tonight.
Sure.
And then, from an administration standpoint, I don't mean to muddle that word too much, we, we can talk about the, the training and onboarding and
Yeah, the training is gonna go well, we'll work well together, Kelly and I have already talked about that a little bit, how we were gonna work it, we'll be fine.
I'm in the best hands in town.
Yeah.
Started with those hands when I was twelve and see where it got me. Sure, sir, you were.
Oh, my gosh.
You want to do this now, or you want to do it after me?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
All right, well, I'll read this and State your name, and then at the end, say, I do. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Alex Pericone.
Do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and I will be faithful and will bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland, will support the Constitution and laws thereof, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of town administrator according to the Constitution and laws of this state.
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
So I'll sign this, and then you can sign it, take it to Kelly or Remble.
Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
Well, thank you, sir, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good man.
I'll be at your house tomorrow morning.
Okay. I'll be here.
All right, next up, we have questions and comments from the community, do we have anybody? Ms. Doxson, you have anything for us this month?
Delver.
Delver? He, he's just here to see who else wanted to climb up there on the water tower with him. All right, there's no questions from the community, we'll move on to committee reports, Councilman Cooney is not here, Councilwoman Miller.
I just want to reach out and thank again the fifth grade students from Manchester Elementary, as long as, as, well as Mrs. Smith, their art teacher, for the decorations for the town tree. There was a very nice article on the front page of the Carroll County Times about it, with some great photos of the students decorating the tree, which has been a local favorite. One thing that I do want to kind of look at or maybe talk about at some point is bringing back Black Friday, more so than it is currently. The tree lighting was great, we had, you know, some things, Black Friday used to be a huge deal for our town, and I realized with the businesses, the Business Alliance, being a North Carroll Alliance, totally understand that, when it was Mama, maybe it was a smaller group, but maybe we can look at between now and next, next Black Friday, getting some of the businesses on board to do some kind of something, just to get the business and the publicity back, the fire department did some things, they had a turnout, but not quite like it used to be. So just whatever we can do to bring Black Friday back to our community.
Or even rethink it a little bit.
Just, you know, reach out maybe to some of the schools and see if some of the band members would play carols, or just something. I'm not saying we have to go to the extreme that we had with the buses and the, the hay wagon through town, we don't need to maybe go quite that big right off the bat, but what can we do to get some of the businesses open, even if they're willing to do like a gift card sale, you know, buy so much, get a ten-dollar free, something just to kind of get some people back in to the community that evening to enjoy.
Okay, good thoughts, Councilman Pacelli?
The North Carroll Business Alliance has their Christmas party this Thursday from four to seven, MJs, and last month, they did elect new officers, unfortunately, I don't have that list in front of me, but that organization is, is growing and getting stronger.
Okay, Councilwoman Howe?
We had a meeting last night, and the only thing on the calendar at the Nature Center would be the first day hike, January first, two thousand and twenty-three, and it's open to everyone, and it is from eleven to one with light refreshments provided. And there's two ways to do this, if you want to take a long hike, there's one at eleven and twelve, and then the short hikes, if you don't want to do all that, is eleven-thirty and twelve-thirty. So get out there and take a hike, it's gonna be cold, and that's all I have.
Councilman Richardson?
Sure, there's been nothing on the rental housing front, but one thing I do want to make note of and thank the fire department, I've had many residents say something to me about the new train garden and also the Santa, you know, it really, really, it gives a sense of community in the town, I think the residents really appreciate that, so definitely want to extend a, you know, a token of appreciation to the fire department for doing those two things, so, so, that's it, that's all I have.
All right, reminder, next council meeting's Tuesday, January tenth. Talking before the meeting, this is the, the slow time of year, starts to pick up again after the first of the year, the budget season, so we'll have some more challenges this year. I recognize Mr. Steve Miller one more time, I know you're gonna help with the transition, but after a, a long career, and a a long time in that seat, too, in these meetings.
It's a good ride, it's a good ride.
Janssen?
I, I, I plan on being, during the transition period, I plan on being at the next meeting as an observer, but I look at it and say, within that next week, I'll probably finish my tenure and be well on our way, so. Yeah, it was a good ride, what can I tell you?
Well, yeah, I, I'm a little bit sentimental about it, I told you before, I, I was elected as a young guy in nineteen ninety-nine, it was two people that really, like, taught me a lot and didn't, you know, wasn't on the outside, and it was, it was you and Dan Riley, so. So I, I appreciate that, and sorry to see you go, but I think you've got better things ahead.
I do, I have a grandson.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, with that, take a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, good night, everyone.